Okay.
You are recording, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
That's what Manover used to call it, Jim Pickle.
You got me. Hello, Mr. Pickle, how are you? Right.
I think they defended our little work. Okay, just don't care another employee.
Did you write them the list of requirements?
Did I what?
Write them the list of requirements.
I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Kingston Municipal Plant and Commission Order. Mr. Brick, would you please call the roll?
Member Gary Botkin?
Here.
Member Sammy Frog? Member Jim Owens?
Here.
Vice Chairman Wade Levin?
Here.
Secretary Beau Pickle?
Here.
Member Philip Martin? Chairman Tim Neal?
Here.
All right, I've got two sets of minutes for approval. Do I hear a motion to approve these two sets of minutes?
So move.
Second. Mr. Owen, do you see any corrections or deletions to the minutes?
No.
Mr. Levin. See anything? Call the roll on the minutes, please.
Gary Botkin?
Aye.
Jim Owens?
Yes.
Wade Levin?
Yes.
Beau Pickle?
Yes.
Tim Neal?
Aye.
All right, one of the reports. Uh, the only report I've got is the BZA met earlier. They passed two, um, approved two things, um, tonight. One was a ramp for ADA handicap and the other was for setback for what's, uh, number two on our list tonight. So. Mr. Bowen, do you have anything? Anything from the bonding committee?
No.
Historic zoning?
No.
And I went over the BZA. All right, do we have anybody that wishes to comment from the public? That's not on the agenda? All right. First of all, we'll go on, number one is Wade Levin on behalf of Hands of Mercy Enterprises, property owners of one thirty-four East Cumberland Street, Kingston, identified as map fifty-eight B. Group E parcel sixteen and fifteen is zone C one. Is requesting closed right away alley between two thirty-three North Third Street and one thirty-four East Cumberland Street. Mr. Levin.
Hi, I'm, um, presenting in front of you in my professional capacity, not on the board. So I just wanted to let everyone know that this is completely separate than that, from that. Um, the, the intent here is there is a, an existing alley between, uh, three different pieces of property, or four different pieces of property, that has been platted as an alley. It has been used as an alley. It's been, um, the only thing that hasn't been done is, um, maintained by the city or recognized by the city. And so we really just wanted to be here today as a formality to say, this is an alley that, that the parties would like to close as a public alley, um, knowing the city doesn't see it as that. It's, it's a, that, we're here for, as a formality to try to, I guess, get moved to the next step. And as a, um, in, in a public capacity, say that we'd like to close this.
I'm gonna refer to Mr. Bowen, because I think we, I don't think there's anything that this planning commission can do, because closing of a public alley, we would have to go forward to city council. Am I correct, sir?
Yeah, so, um, this is something, a conversation that, that goes way back. Um, I, I've talked with, uh, city attorneys, both current and former, uh, extensively about this over the years. Have had it brought to my attention by, um, I think, three of the four, um, three of the four adjacent property owners. So, so we are familiar with it. Um, Mr. McPherson's opinion and, and Andrew's are the same, that, and I think with, at everyone's, that it, it's not city property. Um, in, in speaking with Andrew, he, he and I agree that there is a way to do this. Uh, I think probably the easiest way is to, in some form or fashion, to establish who owns what, and then the city could quit cla- ultimately quit claim, um, you know, interest i- in those various sections. Uh, I'm not speaking for Andrew, but I'm kinda paraphrasing what, what we've talked about. His recommendation would be that this matter be referred to the city council, which is really the more appropriate, uh, body to address it. And then the council, if they so choose, could then instruct Andrew to, to work on it farther, so.
Ms. Clark, do you have something?
Well, I, I don't mean to disagree with Mr. Thompson. He's not here to defend himself. But there wouldn't be any necessity for quitclaim deeds from the city. Um, the property, what has happened is, is over the years, this alley has gotten set off on all the maps, going back as far back as the county has maps. It shows as an alley. So it's not part of anybody's property, no deed that's, that, that, well, I've checked the title to all of it, that changed the title to the surrounding properties and it's, and it's an excluded section. The properties just don't encompass it. So it's been set off as an alley and it's been treated as a public alley. So while we're trying to do is accomplish is with, because it's within the bounds of the city, is to have the city say, by resolution, we don't have an interest in it. It's not ours, we don't make any claim to it. We don't need a quitclaim deed from you, because once we get that and once it's closed off as a public alley, automatically by law, it becomes owned to the center line by the adjoining tracts, which would be United Community Bank, uh, the owners of Kinzer's and Hands of Mercy. And then how they want to exchange it among themselves by quitclaim deeds, they can do at that point. But we don't need any, from the county or the city as, as it relates to the ownership. We need a resolution that says, it's not a city street, it's not a, uh, to the degree it's a public thoroughfare, we are banning it.
Okay, well, this, this body tonight cannot do that. We don't not do resolutions. So we're gonna have to take this before the city council and turn it over where Andrew can work with you, Ms. Clark, and, and you Wade, and figure out what the city council needs to do to make everything right.
Right. And, and understanding this, this body, uh, uh, all we're doing is saying that, that we've heard this, we understand it, and know that it needs to go to the next step. And, and that's, that's really our goal today is.
Mr. Chairman, the, me and the county attorney has just did exhaust of research on this exact item. Rightaways, if they are, if they get dedicated, then for them to become city property, property, they have to be accepted. If you, if it's never been accepted, or you've never maintained it, then it's really not your property.
Right, I'm, I'm agreeing, it's not our property.
And, uh, the property owners themselves, like she said, can get together all of them that touch it, and then they can petition to have its deeded off and separated. But it has to be in agreement with all the adjoining property owners to that.
But if it does not belong to the city of Kingston, why does the city of Kingston have to be even involved in it?
I don't even think you need to be involved in it.
It, it, it's more of a formality, because on all of the mapping, it, it shows it as an alley. So it's, it's to, to present it as it's been shown on, on all the mapping. That, that's, that's really why we're here, even, you know, knowing that there's no ownership, there's no claim, there's none of that. But because it has been pres- presented as such, is why we're, why we're here.
And, and Andrew has, and not speaking for him, but he has said he'd be more than happy to work with Ms. Clark, with, with the, the interested parties. He just needs council to authorize him to do that, so.
Right, so what we'll have to do is we'll have to add it to the council agenda for first Tuesday in November and, and get Andrew, get him to where he can get it out. I mean, it's not something that needs to be done tomorrow. I don't think it's a matter of urgency, so that's what we can do. So there'll be no action taken by the planning commission on this tonight. Thank you. All right, number two. Jason Nelson on behalf of Nelson Rentals, owner of property at four ninety-three Galahad Road, Kingston, identified map fifty-nine parcel nineteen is zone C two, is requesting a site, site plan approval in order to build a forty-by-six building for equipment rental company. Yes, or Mr. Nelson?
Please, Mr. Nelson and I'll represent Mr. Nelson and Jesse's here. So you have the site plan in front of you and we're open to any, any questions you may, may have?
So the only thing I had in, in looking at it was the, the entrance. Um, if I remember correctly, from driving by there for ever, it's kind of a small entrance way into that area.
The, the entrance onto Galahad View Road or into, that's a?
From Galahad into the property.
Yeah, that's an existing, that's an existing driveway to the motel behind it. It?
So nothing different had, had happening?
We're gonna, we're gonna, we proposed to leave it exactly the way it is, since it was functioning for the hotel. We, we're just gonna come off the, the driveway.
Is that driveway on the plat itself?
Pardon me?
Driveway on the plat for the motel?
Yes, this is a, yes. Actually, I believe his, this parcel's center line is in the center line of that, of the road or the, the driveway.
Are there any questions, or any other questions on this?
On your calculations and stuff in your impervious surfaces? Uh, you're, you're not increasing the impervious surfaces, what?
We may, we may, just a little bit in that, that corner of the proposed sixty by, by forty. And we've got the surveyor on, on standby to, to prove that. But the, the survey didn't pick up the, the gravel in front of the, the asphalt that's there. It's obvious in the, um, it's, it's obvious in the, the aerial that that lot is gravel. But we don't know where that, we don't know exactly where that line, where that line is. So we, I don't know for sure that we've encroached, gone over the existing gravel, but we, we may have, but I don't know.
Uh, you're doing an addition, correct?
Pardon me?
Doing another?
Whole new building?
Huh?
A whole new?
You're building a whole new building, is it in the exact footprint as the other one?
No, it's a brand-new building and I believe it's on the footprint of the existing gravel. So the new building, I believe, is on the footprint of the existing gravel.
Mr. Levin, correct me if I'm wrong, but, uh, an impervious surface gravel is not that.
Uh, it's, well, there, there are arguments about gravel, because you have compaction underneath it. Some of it is compacted, some is not. Um, it, it's, water does go through there, but they're, they're different. People that argue different ways, that it's, you know, that you have compaction underneath the gravel, so it keeps the water from soaking in, but, you know, it's, I'm not an engineer, so that's all I've heard is it's both, both, yeah.
Yep.
And, you know, if you, if you are, with a new building, you are removing some of the impervious surface, regardless of whether or not, unless it's on top of asphalt over it. So there is some area that's being removed from the impervious area. Right, I, I didn't go through your calculations.
Basically, all, all we're saying is it's less than five acres. We use, and we're saying impervious matches impervious, therefore the runoff is the same.
How much bigger is this building than the one that was there? How many square foot of imperv- of actual, uh, gravel are you replacing with a roof?
I, I can't say that exactly, because our, the survey doesn't, doesn't show the gravel, the gravel line.
Uh-huh. We're adding a new building over here.
Okay, so.
But the, the building, the building itself is twenty-four hundred.
Okay, it?
Twenty-four hundred, so we're less than, I would say, we're less than that, for sure.
Brooks, in the application, that, uh, there is an addition shown here on the end of it. And? Brooke?
Yes?
Look at this again, make sure that we're right.
The Huddle House building is saying, actually, we're adding a whole forty-by-sixty building that's separate from the old existing building.
Okay.
And the forty-by-sixty is sitting on some asphalt.
So this is the?
And gravel.
Okay, is it an open structure or is it enclosed?
Enclosed. It will be enclosed.
Okay, well, you have increased the impervious surfaces by quite a bit.
Well, I, I, we'd, it'd have to, it'd have to be less than thirty-two hundred square feet. And it's probably less than a quarter of, of that, so at most, I'd say our impervious increase is a thousand square feet.
It, as far as the other stuff on this, Mr. Chairman, uh, if they go to do anything with the, uh, access to the property, that's gonna have to have D, T dot approval. Other than that, then, for my purposes, if they can provide me the right square footages for this, and prove by the numbers that it's not going to increase with the correct impervious surfaces, I don't have a issue with it. They've met everything else as far as the site plan goes that is in your, uh, what site plan, unless I've missed something, and I could have, if.
I, I have a couple of questions. So, on your, on your detail sheet, you have, um, your, your construction entrance. And I don't see a separate entrance for your construction entrance for the, and knowing that you're using the same driveway, I understand that, um, I didn't know if you were adding something that was like in gravel. On your detail sheet, you have that, uh, construction entrance, it typically has a large rough, it knocks the dirt off of it. I just didn't see that on the site plan.
No, I'm getting the BZA plans and I didn't copy my, I didn't bring my, um...
I just didn't see it on the exact number, where it was gonna be located. Cause you are gonna, you?
Yeah, we proposed it right, we proposed it right there, right underneath exist.
So between that, where the asphalt is? Yeah, I, I just didn't see it.
You're right, you're exactly right. We, we would put it right, right here.
Okay. That keeps the dirt off of that. Cause somebody else is using that. Um, other thing was the, you, you're proposing to move the thirty-foot right of way for the overhead electric power line? And go around the, around the proposed building?
Yes, between, between them, between the proposed and the existing.
Yeah, bury the good stuff in there, yeah. Um, on the, the, the back left corner of the property, um, the proposed easement doesn't match the existing easement on the neighboring property. You're actually extending that easement slightly on the neighbor's property and that would, you'd have to get their blessing for that. I can show you that. Cause it's like, it is a very small triangle, but it, it is there, it's existing. It's probably eight feet of their property that that easement would encompass. Just because it's there and they would need to understand that.
Okay.
And is the existing parking sufficient for two buildings?
I use three per, three per a thousand square feet as a, as a starting place for providing the parking.
I'm just asking, is, is, is it in compliance?
The proposed building, is it gonna be just housing equipment and stuff? Or is it gonna be part of the retail part?
It's not gonna be part of the retail, it's just for housing equipment.
Okay.
Do we need to do anything about the, uh, crossing over the fifteen-foot setback?
It, variance was approved at the BZA prior to.
Yeah, that's what the BCA did, at five o'clock.
Is, is existing restaurant building gonna stay?
No. I would.
The, the building's gonna stay, it's not gonna remain a restaurant, if that's what.
But the building's gonna stay and you're gonna use it?
Yes, sir, yeah.
Okay, good.
Anything else? Do you hear a motion for the site plan?
So move.
Most of them, Mr. Botkin, is there second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Levin. Any further discussion? Mr. Brick, call the roll, please.
Gary Botkin?
Aye.
Jim Owens?
Yes.
Wade Levin?
Yes.
Beau Pickle?
Yes.
Tim Neal?
Aye. Items three is consideration, uh, Rome County Government owner at one forty-five Ray Street in Kingston, identified as map fifty-eight G parcel nine is zone C one, is presenting a proposed plan to create additional parking for the Rome County Courthouse. And they are just presenting to us, there is nothing that we can vote on. It's, they're just telling us what they're doing.
Yep.
Yeah, I learned that a few weeks ago. Everything, you know, looking at it, to, from my perspective, it looks fine.
Okay.
So, do you make anything to add? Yeah, this is probably one of the better maps. That has to be Mayor Creswell, that's who I'm gonna blame it on anyway, so.
I know who drew it.
All right, so that was what they, uh, brought to us, which we cannot take any action on, cause we can't do anything about it. And I know they're already starting to work on it now. Okay. So, item four. Consideration for adding a requirement for the certified post-construction as-built of any project that proposes a new road or requires new stormwater detention backed by a bond, it must be completed by a licensed surveyor and checked by the desi- by a design engineer of record. So can anyone speak to this?
Yeah, I, I can, this, this was my idea.
Okay. I was just waiting.
So, so the reason for this is, um, mostly to ensure that what we approve here gets built. Right, so, you can get engineering plans all, all day long in here. But i- if somebody decides to make their detention pond look exactly the same on paper, but it's half the size, and it only holds half the water, then there's no, nothing for us to, to say, yeah, it was built right. So.
Isn't that the responsibility of a building inspector?
That's final inspection on a building.
Yeah.
Our, the building inspector doesn't qualify to exclude measurements in those calculations.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that's not.
He, he's talking about the subdivision, uh, retention basins, uh, drainage ditches, culvert sizes and stuff. That's, that should all be, uh, verified in the road construction itself by a third-party engineer. Uh, we've been using that in the county for years as far as, uh, roads go. And we are headed in the direction of this too, for just the verification of what was approved on the site plan.
And, and honestly, an engineer can't do that without a surveyor certifying those, those measurements.
So it's what this is for, to add to it?
That, that, this is an example, the one that they colored, that's just an example for what we have to do in Knoxville, is that, is, is a post-construction as-built survey. So it, it shows that the right pipe sizes were used, that they're at the correct slope, so that they don't flow backwards or not flow at all, and there's problems for the city later. Um, and it's to make sure that, on, to make sure that, that, um, that everything is done exactly right. Things that, that are easy to sort of not be very diligent with while you're building something. Things that are like, well, this is close enough, you know, it's, it's in the ground, nobody's ever gonna see it. Um, and it, it ensures that, that it's built so that the city's not gonna have problems later. Um, a, a lot of it is detention ponds, a lot of it is, um, sediment erosion controls. But the majority of it is, you know, we have requirements for detention, and that's for a specific reason. And if, if those aren't, you know, if, if, if a contractor decides, I'm gonna save several thousand dollars and not do this exactly, it's gonna look exactly the same, and be in the same spot, but I'm just gonna do it a little bit different. So there are ways to cut corners to save, save. So it, to, to ensure that that is done correctly, and the reason for the detention is so that we don't have the additional flooding from the development to begin with, that's the whole point of it. So, I was, um, a lot of what we heard from last, last month was, we're just gonna build this and, as we go, and not go by any design. I know that we have to do that, but it, it made me think about other places and, and that there's not really something that's done right now to ensure that that's done correctly.
Mr. Bowen, do you have anything to add to what Mr. Levin's talking about? Mr. Cover, do you?
Yeah, now, you're proposing this for new subdivision developments or any type of site plan that comes in here?
Any type of site plan that requires drainage and detention.
Okay.
And, and it, it's, it's not really something that the planning commission, um, votes on. It's, it's more of a, um, that the city's protecting themselves on something like this, that the city would have to have an ordinance on. And, and we would ensure that references those ordinances in the regulations in the site plan. That, that's really the, the only place that, that this body would deal with that, is to ensure, to have it in the subregs, so that they would know later on that they would have to do this.
So you're saying the bonding committee would not turn loose until they got this?
Right.
Certification from?
Correct.
From an engineer, surveyor?
That's typically what's done in other places. And, and it, it is, honestly, it's a pain, because I have to do these. And, and it, it is, honestly, it's a pain, because I have to do these all the time. But it's in, it, I think it's important, because I've seen so many contractors try to cut corners, and try to, you know, they'll, it, it won't be designed in, in a certain location, and they'll, they'll, they'll move the pipe, and, and it'll be, it'll look about the same on the paper, but it's not. And, and so, I, I've seen so many times that it's just, things aren't built like they're supposed to be.
Mr. Bowlin?
Just, just a thought, do you think, since this kind of bleeds into, into the city and, and possible in, enforcement and, and other issues, it might be prudent to get for this the city attorney, and get him to give an opinion on this, and send it back?
Yes, I think we could. So, um.
It also comes down to enforcement, is, is who, who inspects? Is it, you know, who, who looks at these, and who, who's gonna say whether or not this is done like it, like it's supposed to be? It's, it's, it's just an idea, and it's a thought that, that.
Yeah.
It was kinda, there's thought.
As far as for subdivisions and stuff like that, large developments, it is a good idea.
Well, I'm not, not disagreeing at all.
I, I'm not for sure if it's a great idea for every site plan that comes in here, because you don't have a bond on those. You do have a bond on every large development.
Right, which we could, we could word it to where if, if the development has a bond, these are the requirements after it is over with, is to make sure this is done.
I'm sure Andrew can come up with some wording that would work.
Uh, do we need to vote on move next, send it to Andrew, or we just let him go with it?
If that's the intent, I mean, we can certainly forward this to him.
I think we turned over, let Andrew research and do what we need to do, and then add it to something that's, you know, that's bonded, that we need to do. Okay. All right, consideration for updating the zoning ordinance. So I've looked through everything, uh, early this morning, I know this resolution needs work before it comes to city council, correct?
That's up to you, we gave you our final draft that we?
Right. Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with it, everything looked good to me when I read it earlier today. Does anybody have any discussion on it, or would like to make a motion to go ahead and approve it?
Well, the, the three ladies that put a lot of time into this, Helly, Brooke, and, uh, the old chairman.
Stephanie?
Yeah, Stephanie. Lot of help.
Right.
They did a good job.
Do you hear a motion to, uh, consider this resolution and updating the zoning ordinance?
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Botkin, is there a second? Any further discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Brooke, call the row, please.
Gary Botkin? Jim Owens?
Yes.
Wade Levin?
Yes.
Bo Pickle?
Yes.
Tim Martin?
Who?
Who's that last, Tim Martin?
What did I say? Tim Neal, sorry.
Tim Neal?
Ah.
I apologize.
Yes, sir.
Should that, should that motion have been in the form of a recommendation to?
Yeah, a recommendation to move it to city council. All right, so the next one is interim building official Taylor Poole, representing a resolution needing to adopt the twenty-twenty-four HRC and IBC building codes.
Um, Taylor had to be at the city of Hermon tonight, so he asked Glenn if he would present this to you all.
Okay, well, the resolution is the normal type of resolution you see for new code adoption. Uh, the areas that, where the state gave us a little leeway, that we could, uh, do some amendments to it, to not do over the top things like, uh, lower door testing and that type of stuff. We exempted it out, we went ahead and stayed with the O nine tables for the insulation requirements and stuff. So, uh, the, really the biggest changes in, uh, the new code is in some of the span charts and stuff. They've gotten a lot more specific.
Does anybody have any questions about any of this?
No.
Do you hear a motion that we, uh, move this along for the city council to adopt it? I'm sure Mr. Levin, say, or Mr. Pickle, Mr. Levin, anything else? Mr. Pickle?
No.
You guys got anything?
No.
Ms. Brooke, call the row.
Gary Botkin? Jim Owens?
Yes.
Wade Levin? Bo Pickle?
Yes.
Tim Neal?
Hi. Is there anything else to come for the planning commission tonight? Seeing nothing, this meeting is adjourned.
Tim Martin? Where in the world did that come from?
Well, Phil and Mark.
Did he give you something about?